...number fifty, Mahoney County Commissioners, the order with everyone to stand for the question.
... ...of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. Didn't expect to see so many wide awake people three days after Christmas, so it's a good one. All right. Public comments. Start the meeting, if anyone has anything they'd like to address the board with, I ask you to come to the podium, give them three minutes. Mike?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Last month you signed an agreement with Republic Services.
Mike, for the record, we need you to give your name and address.
My name is Mike Peckert, Division Manager of Carbon Limestone Landfill eighty-one hundred South State Line Road, Lowellville, Ohio.
Thank you.
Four four three six. So last month you signed an agreement with us, which will go for fifty to a hundred years, and as part of that...
Carol will be the only one here then. She'll have the...
Carol.
It'll be me here, Mike.
Yes.
That'll be us.
Yes.
That's okay, though.
I'll be buried here.
We'll be right here in the same location.
So anyway, as part of that agreement, I delivered a check to Poland Village for five thousand dollars earlier in December, and I come to you today to give you a check for ten thousand dollars for the Hazmat Team. This is the first of many. This ten thousand will be paid for the next fifty to a hundred years. As long as the landfill operates, you'll get the ten thousand dollars. Every week, every month, every year.
Come on, see, you guys...
Mike, I gave you some money and you wanted more. Thank you. Give it to Anna.
Yeah, Anna.
Come on, Anna.
Anna, we need to get a picture of you and Anna.
Yes, thank you.
The representative in charge.
Hey, good deal, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for working.
It's always nice when you come bearing gifts in the county.
It seems that's all I ever come here, right?
They call them Santa Claus for a reason.
Well, that's a good thing, you know, this Christmas cheer. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of board meeting number forty-nine, Thursday, December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, and approval of bills for payment.
So move.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes.
Motion approved, Journal Entry number one.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes.
Travels. Engineers.
Good morning, everybody. Let her raise the twenty-eighteen annual travels for the Engineers' Office to attend various conferences, seminars, trainings, ever-quieted continuing education for licensed professionals.
Right, thank you, Patrick. Lead Base, Phil.
Agreement for travel for, travel within Ohio and Pennsylvania, which are looking hard on meetings, training, and such.
All right. Auditors.
No, it's agreed.
I'm sorry. Code of Moses. All right. Yield the travels.
Motion approved, travels, letters A through...
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. All right, now agreements. Auditors.
Attorney with State of Ohio, on their completion of basic financial statements for three years, amount of thirty-two thousand per year.
Excellent. Record of course.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. It's a request for professional services with Barbara Sorn, and basically she's going to provide project management services in relation to our Tiberia E filing system. It's an amount of eighteen thousand dollars, and when the purchase order is increased next year, it will be non-general funds. It will be from a court technology account, those funds will be paid.
Convention and visitors, C through...
Good morning. I'm lining up things for twenty-eighteen. Letter C is in agreement with Miles Meteor Ruth, who handles our literature distribution at the rest stops on the Pennsylvania Turnpike leading here to Ohio. Letter D is advertising with E-Tour Magazine. Letter E is our advertising agreement with Meredith Corporation, which publishes Midwest Living or Best of the Midwest. Letter F is for Auto Club Group Publishing Alliance, which is a variety of AAA publications for those people looking for road trips. And letter G is with Emerald Magazine, Guest Quest, a lot of online advertising there. And finally, letter H is with H A R Publishing, Crossing Magazine, which is a Canadian publication that reaches our neighbors to the north.
Canadian. All right, data.
This was a, this was for an agreement with, with light business products, for the annual software insurance, and maybe this could spur on our software mobile search product, and that's an amount of eight thousand six hundred eighty dollars, and that is non-general.
All right, thank you. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter J is in agreement with Thomas Book and Associates for some engineering design services on the final phase of Meridian Road, which goes from I six eighty north to the county line. It's federally funded, and it's a joint project with us and the City of Youngstown. Letter K is in agreement with Concord Road Equipment for repairs for one of our vehicles, and that is non-general funds.
Thanks, Pat. Lead Base, Phil.
Letter L is in agreement with residents in for relocation of families, as they're doing that, in their homes. Letter M is an actual, that has control projects, and small...
One B.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. N is in agreement with N Met LLC for repair and maintenance on Hazmat CAD equipment service, and that's for one thousand four hundred dollars, non-general. Letter O is a memory and a understanding between the Sheriff's Office and the Mahoney County Mental Health Recovery Board for services to provide inmates. And this is a MOU that will extend through to the end of Jerry's term, or one month after Jerry's term should cease, and we're recording that today with the Commissioners' Office. And in addition to that, this gives access to the inmates, to all levels of assistance through the Mental Health Recovery Board, through agreements that they already have. So that's really a great partnership between the Sheriff and the Mental Health Board. And then the letter E is an, is an addendum to that MOU to identify additional services specifically being paid by the Treatment Alternatives Program Grant that we got this year, that will last two years.
Okay, great, thanks. Recycle.
Hi, good morning. This is a non-general funds with an agreement with Y S U, and it's focused mainly on materials exchange. This is our industrial waste and virgin strategy of the state solid waste plan.
All right, thank you. Agreements.
Motion approved, agreements A through Q.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Exchange orders. Don's order.
Good morning, everyone. We're closing out the dog shelter project, and this is a de-dock. When they originally were demoing a house that was previously on the site, they determined they didn't have to remove much of the foundation or footing, so we have a deduct of three thousand dollars.
Thanks, John. Engineers.
Commissioners, letter B is change order number one and final with RT Vernal Paving for the twenty-seventeen PWC resurfacing Hitchcock Road Culver and Cala Road Culver replacements, which resulted in a decrease in amount.
Lead Base, change order for unforeseen item W double instruction at the sidewalk project. Next one. O N B Grants.
Commissioners, this is a decrease in the amount of five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for contract with Terrian's Funds for the Quicksville Lighting and Sidewalk Project. This was a partnership between the county engineers, O-Dot Funding, and C W G.
Excellent. Change orders.
Motion approved, change orders A through B.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Appointments, Commissioners, want to follow individual Sir Maheen County Convention and Visitors Bureau effective January one, two thousand eighteen, for a two-year term. Ray Mancini, Booboo Mancini, is going to be a new appointment on the Convention and Visitors. Does an excellent, will do an excellent job. All right, motion for appointments.
Motion approved, appointments five A.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Yes, resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
On the sign.
Well...
You can tell this is the end of the...
Yeah.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Yes. Record of bids, purchasing.
Two proposals were received, one from Modern Office Supply and one from Staples.
Do we get one of those easy buttons?
I have one. I might lend it to you.
We need one of those easy buttons.
All right, I'll give you three.
I have one that says something different on it. All right, record of bids.
Motion approved, record of bids two A.
Go call. Second.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution of awards. Engineers, you're a busy man today, Patrick. John is...
Commissioner, letter A is the award of the Mahoney County Causeway Project to Virtue Gaffney Excavating, the amount a hundred sixty-one thousand, three forty-nine ninety. This is eighty percent federally funded. Virtue Gaffney wasn't a low bid. Letter B is the award of the purchase pickup and delivery number nine limestone aggregate from East Fairfield Company, I'm sorry, East Fairfield Coal Company, the amount of a hundred thousand dollars, and this is non-general funds as well.
All right, thank you, Patrick. Resolution of awards.
Motion approved, resolution of awards A and B.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
Yes. Resolutions. A, Commissioners, resolution approving the appointment of Mahoney County Prosecutor Paul J. Gaines as the Law Director for Boardman Township pursuant to the RRC Section five oh four point one five. That's because they're a home rule township, and they have to have a prosecutor, they have to have a law director, and so that's who they choose the prosecutor, so it's a wonderful... B, Commissioners, O N B, C.
Commissioners, this is a resolution, we'll do yearly for cash advances at the end of the year, where we have grants, there's still waiting on our money to come in, those monies come back to, it comes from the general fund and then back into the general fund at the beginning of the year. We just do a amount not to exceed, I don't expect it to be that high, but it gives us a window so that the other veteran processes are in interest. Item C is for our Bond Council, that with Squires, patent above, for two thousand and eighteen. And then item D is agreement that the Commissioners have as part of the membership with the JOAT, which is the Joint Office of Economic Development. This is a withdrawal from that membership, and you have to give a six-month notification, so that's why it's effective June thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen, and we have to pay a pro way to share. Item E is the agreement we have with the COG, that the Commissioners provide support to the COG, and this is item E for this year, and what was approved by the Board for the COG, and requesting, you guys are approving it, Boardman and Austin County Trusts are also approving it.
All right, thank you. Engineers. We should have stayed up.
I should have. It's like dated church.
Letter F is resolution of necessity to purchase equipment packages from Henderson Products under NJPA. These are snow and ice packages for the tandem and single axle trucks.
Facilities purchasing.
These are blanket POs for goods and services through cooperative purchasing, and enables us to achieve economy scale, legal protection, eliminates duplication of requisition, purchase orders, invoices, and expedite the whole process when there's a need for a good or service.
Did you repeat that, Jim? All right, facilities purchasing on H, is that included in that?
No, unfortunately. We had a heating water supply pipe break in town support wing, and required immediate dust.
Bob breaks first up.
Human resources.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, Nancy. This is a resolution approving the reverence of understanding the various unions here at the county to accept the health care plan for twenty-eighteen.
Good deal. Thank you. O N B Grants, EMA.
Commissioners, this is an agreement with the State of Ohio to provide services to our Marx radios at EMA. We have four radios, and it'll be a total of four hundred and eighty dollars a year for that service.
First thing.
We're requesting that the proposals that were received for office supplies be rejected. Can you give you a little background? The proposal we received, Modern Office, who are current contract, was a fifty-one point one percent discount, they lowered it to forty-five percent. Staples came in at fifty-five percent with greater discount. With moving over to cooperative purchasing, we go up to a sixty-eight percent discount overall, plus rebates. When you're looking at our bid, county has approximately forty-five units that participate at four hundred thousand, but cooperative purchasing, there's seven thousand participants, three hundred million spent with that purchasing program. So unfortunately, I tried for the local guys, between Amazon and a big box, it's hard to compete, since I've been in this purchasing, I know six office supply companies in Mahoney County that are no longer existent, but we did give a try, it's just too far to spread too much of a discount.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Is that a cover?
I would be a blanket PO for everyone then to participate in cooperative purchasing, and if Commissioners do approve, Meg and I will be sending out an email with instructions, and we're going to have an in-service and make sure everyone gets three easy buttons.
All right, Jim. Thank you. All right.
Motion to approve resolutions, A through L.
Second.
Go call.
Commissioner Midia O'Denby?
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell Cantsy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzel?
All right. Call for the good of your Pat, you know, seeing as how you're used to standing up, sitting down, just like you're going through math, you might as well stand back up and give us something good to say.
Well, there's a nasty flu going around, so take care of yourselves. Winter has arrived, be safe out there, make sure you bring your animals in, and just wish everybody a happy new year, that's all.
Thank you.
That's true.
That's true, everybody's got, everybody knows, it's like it's a present for Christmas, everybody got a cold.
Anybody else? Nothing good to say?
I grew up in Erie, and I'm glad I'm a youngster.
That's a wonderful thing. Now, if you deny your allegiance to the communist nation and disregard that Pittsburgh Steelers will accept you.
Now, they're all, oh, I'm not a Pittsburgh Steeler, Frank.
I like that, I like that. You're accepted. Audrey.
Carol said, hmm. I just want to say, let everyone know that the revenue bonds for the sanitary closed today, and we were responsible coming in, so there was to have, and sanitary bill, and audit our office, Commissioners, in that process, we were able to rewrite the trust agreement, and with our Bond Council, and everything, and get things cleaned up, and actually do a couple of savings, so it's a good thing, those revenues are coming in, the old bonds will be paid out tomorrow, and so good to be open to the future.
It's a wonderful thing. A lot of work to get to this point, you know, I'll tell you, Pat's office...
Yes, definitely.
And everybody involved did a great job. And we'll give Pat a little credit, too.
Yes, definitely.
Not too much, but a little bit. Anybody else? Carol.
Well, you know, I, I just want to wish, before I get into something that I think is really important, I told Audrey, I just have to tell everybody, because this is kind of multiplying, and you guys know about the veterans, the veterans, female veterans housing, that we have been working on. Tim, you were, you were there as a, as the union representative to go through the building with our partners on this, which is the federal government, the state, some locals, the Veterans Administration, our office, Audrey and Jimmy have done a lot of work on this, to let you guys know, and you already have, keep you abreast of what we're doing there. I am so excited about this, because I, I just don't think there's enough of help, I'll put it that way, that's given to female veterans that have the same issues as the male veterans, and to have some transitional housing in Oak Hill, which is set up for hospital, and the rooms are there, and to try to see if we can make this fit and have the money to do this through grants and, and from the federal government, the state, and different agencies that can help us, Veteran Services, to help the veterans, female veterans, with the same things that the men have, and keep them separated from the male veterans. I believe there's only, what, one other housing area, and that's Summit County, or Cleveland has that, and there's only, what, ten beds? I think there's either eight to ten beds, and that's it. So hopefully, this will work in our building, at Oak Hill, and Jennifer Bond, and of course, you know Jennifer, she's one of the commanders, I believe, with the Veterans Association, and the MamVets, and so she's helping with that as well. And for those of you here that are veterans, of course, you understand the different, different areas of which the females have had problems in the military, and, and they have families just like the men do, and some are single mothers, and so we're going to try to help them do this. I think with the help of Anthony and Dave, it's a great project. It is probably one of the better projects, I mean, of course, we've had so many excellent things this year, but this project hits home, because you have women with children that really don't have anywhere to go, and if you look at TV and you see the rescue mission, and how they're adding beds on top of that, you'll see probably in there, some of the females, of course, be at a two-house office and out as well, but, so this going forward for next year, we've had ongoing meetings, we've had meetings with the architect to find out costs, and Jimmy and Audrey will fill in on more of that after we get through the next couple of meetings. I'm excited about this, and I know my two colleagues are excited. Tim, you, you were excited about it as well when we were there. I mean, I got to say one thing about our unions, and they're represented here, when we put Purple Cat together, that is a nonprofit, helping out young people, and, and people that are not like we are, to have jobs and sustain themselves and live in, in a, in an environment that we take for granted, I think. And they all helped on that. And Gallagher, and I think Marty, is it, you or Tim that told me about Gallagher, why don't you tell them about the Gallagher, the reason you guys were a part of doing that?
Tim Gallagher was a, he was an inspector up in Trouble County, actually, and his dad was an electrician, and that would have been, his dad's brother was Joey Gallagher, who was named after Gallagher, his lunchbox boxes is named after. So it does come circle with some of the building trades, of participation with it.
And you guys did a lot of work, all of you tradesmen, did volunteer work to help that kitchen get to where it is, and I say that everywhere I go, that is an accomplishment that we did, that is probably, I mean, in no disrespect, anything else that goes on in this county, because we've done a lot of great things in the year, and I'm sure Anthony and Dave will fill in on that, but these things that we could do to help people, it, it's just the greatest thing in the world, and I'll shut up about it, but I kept you on board, and you're part of the committee now, the trip is part of the committee. So now that you're all here, I can say that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool deal. Anyway, I just want to wish everybody a very happy, a very merry, Merry Christmas is over, but a happy new year, be healthy, stay safe, and keep God in prayer for the new year, and for healthy and happiness throughout the new year. We'll have a good year, I think. Thank you. Thank you, guys, happy new year.
Happy new year. That's my bill.
I'd just like to, you know, echo what Carol said, I mean, the Oak Hill facility is a perfect fit for female veterans, and we already have one of the most state-of-the-art office places up there right now for our veterans, so with the other wraparound agencies that female veterans can utilize, everything's under one roof, it's a one-stop shop, the federal government, I think, would be pleased with the aesthetics of what the Oak Hill Center has to offer. As Carol alluded to earlier, there is federal money that comes through the Department of Veterans Affairs, I worked down in Washington for eleven years, and realized what their budget is, and hopefully the administration will, will recognize the effect that we have communities like ours who want to assist and offer those types of spaces for our female veterans. So I have to credit Carol, she put a lot of work behind this, and Dave, and the Commissioners, and everyone here in the room, to make sure, see if this is a fit for us, and I hope it is. I want to thank everyone and wish everyone a happy new year, you know, this year was a great year, Mahoney County is in the forefront of a lot of accomplishments, not only fiscally, fiscally, budgetarily, but we've done a lot of infrastructure improvements with Pat's office, with the sanitary, you know, the new dog shelter courthouse restoration, we did work on the jail, we did elevators, we did boilers, we did air conditioners, you know, keeping what we have functioning right for our people. And I thank the employees, they, they put a lot of hours in, a lot of hard work, the county making us all look good, and our staff and everybody, so I just want to say thank you, we had a great year.
We did.
Stay healthy and looking forward to two thousand and eighteen, and I see better things on the horizon for Mahoney County, so I look forward to serving with my two colleagues who I have much admiration and respect for in the new year, and happy new year to all your families. Thank you.
Well, the last meeting of the year, hard to believe it's gone already, you know, break through, was through, you know, and Nancy and Carol here, you know, they, they not only beat me and Anthony on a regular basis, but four husbands are both recovering from surgeries, you know, they're, you know, so we're looking for a healthier two thousand and eighteen, and maybe these women will laugh.
Give us a break, yeah.
Both of, me and Anthony are getting over a cold, because Carol and Nancy made a squat in the cold, shovel the sidewalks so they can walk over here this morning, so, so we're, we're recovering, the husbands are recovering, we're glad to see Frank had his shoulder replaced, and Mike had his hip replaced, and, you know, jeez, oh man, these poor guys have been carrying these ladies around so long, they're breaking down, they're breaking down, and it's good to see that they're doing well, and they're, they're on a heal. So Anthony and I, we got a couple of bottles of Crown Royal for Christmas presents, I think that's the only salvation that we have. But anyway, it's, no, it really has been a great year, and I'm thankful to, to have been able to serve with not only Carol and Anthony, but all the employees, and all the great job that they did in the county on behalf of all of us, and, you know, we see, you know, Tim and Marty and Rocky and guys... You know, we see Tim and Marty and Rocky, the guys here from Lakewood, do a great job on behalf of the county, and, you know, just so many people that have worked so hard. I also want to say that I had the privilege yesterday of going over to visit Marcella Walter, one of our deputies that donated her kidney to her fellow officer, and she's doing great, and it was just heartwarming to sit down and talk to somebody who has gone through all that, you know, I mean, that's, you know, a major surgery that she voluntarily did to save the life of one of her fellow officers, but another human being that has done a great job, and I know that Sheriff Bean came here and, you know, talked about it, and, you know, and as well as Pat, who lived it, and so many different things, and how difficult that scenario is, and it was just really nice to sit down and see her and be able to be part of, you know, just to discuss with her and see her improving daily. Said she's still taking some naps on a regular basis, but she's feeling great, she looked great, and looked healthy as, healthy as could be, so it was a wonderful thing. Those are the people that really warm your heart in holiday seasons, that really should be looked at as our heroes, you know, doing things like that. We also, Anthony and Carol and I got to participate, not participate, but witnessed Carla Baldwin being sworn in yesterday as the judge of Youngstown Municipal Court. What a fantastic young lady she is, and, you know, what a background, what a family, you know, her education, her upbringing, just everything involved. It was just, you know, a wonderful person, well-prepared for the job she's taken, and I know she'll do an excellent job, and it was just very, very nice to sit and watch that, and, you know, it just, you know, it makes you go back to think about it, you know, when, you know, you had, you know, what a happy moment it is when you're getting elected, and, you know, being able to serve and fulfilling a dream, and it really seemed like that was her dream. So I think that she said, she wrote correctly, a letter, or an essay when she was in grade school.
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade, that she wanted, what she wanted to do, you know, and, you know, her teacher told her, you know, plan your future, write down what you want to do in life, and that was what she wrote down in sixth grade, you know, so. Yeah, so fulfilling your dream and, you know, being able to serve and help others was just amazing, so it was really, it was really a great event.
And then she was at, Judge Millich had his last veterans' court, and she sat on this, you know, on the dance with him while he did his last veterans' graduation, and passed the time to her, and she will continue that, which is like the greatest thing that started in the city when I was, when I was a councilwoman. Yeah, to help, you know, the veterans, and so that is going to continue on with probably having their new offices over in their own building. So we've got a lot of good things going on in the city. We'll be all right.
That was the last thing I wanted to mention, was Judge Millich, wanted to congratulate him. You know, a lot of you do a great service for Mahoney County, the city of Youngstown, and for the veterans, who did a great job for a long time, and that she will continue his legacy, so it's all good things going on, a lot of good things happening, and we look forward to 2018, hopefully a happy and a healthy one.
Yes.
Women quit beating us so much, so it's all good. Happy New Year, stay safe. Have a blessed year. With that, our next meeting will be determined when it is. We don't have it identified yet, but, you know, I think it will be on a Monday, a reorganizational meeting, and we'll keep you posted as to the exact time and date, but we have it out today. We'll note today when it is, so. Anyway, I wish you a happy New Year. With that, ask for motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Can we say media again? Yes. Commissioner Chappell, Nancy?
Yes.
Yes. Bring those animals in. Hey, Patrick O'Shaughnessy, I got a ticket for you.